So I don't, I might have it somewhere in my email, but I just got it like forwarded to me from either land. I, in the letter.
Last Michael and you two put your heads together.
I obviously didn't read my, he said it in there twice.
David.
That's me. I'm in trouble.
Oh, not really.
You just in public call me?
Yeah.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah, that's all, just in public call me.
Didn't, I didn't think I saw him.
I called up here, gonna get off of it, but.
He's still a little bit shorthanded.
Time's, it is.
There's one minute to the closed session. Okay. Closed session.
It's rock and roll.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for Tuesday, September the 5th. If y'all please stand for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence, please. Thank you all, be seated. Uh, there's, let's see here. There's gonna be one, uh, item for, uh, that would come off the agenda for tonight, and that's the item for closed session. I would need a motion to approve the agenda as presented, except for we're doing away with the closed session.
I'll make such motion.
Second.
Okay, we're all, we're good to go, all those in favor, raise your hand, all those don't agree, raise your hand. Four oh. Need a motion on the minutes as presented, we've had these for a few days.
Motion to approve the minutes as they are.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries four oh. First item is public comments, and I believe, uh, I think Michael is just one person.
I'll make sure.
Oh, okay. Thank you, David, go ahead.
Good evening, folks, my name is David Higgins, Chief of the Lake Creek Fire Department. We come up tonight, what we doing?
Postcards.
But we come up tonight to, uh, just sorta talk a little bit about the fire department, not a lot, but, uh, last month we figured out we did run sixty-two calls, which that, that's a pretty good month for us, so it's, it's getting busy all the time, is, so you can see where we, the fire tax really pays to help us. But what I wanna talk about, these boys right here's got a picture, they're gonna stand up and show you, we have ordered this brand-new fire truck, and so we just wanna tell y'all about it, sort of show you, that way y'all know where our money goes. It'll come in the first of twenty twenty-five, it's a two thousand twenty-five freight line, Cummins motor in it, it's a Pierce body, it will be a thousand gallon pumper. So even just a basic truck, it's not a custom cab, it's a four-door, it's not custom, it's just a four-door truck, but we're looking at over five hundred fifty thousand dollars just for the basic truck, so things ain't cheap. We've got one in the shop right now, a pumper, and it's gonna run about forty thousand to have it fixed, so the pump went out on it, it just wore out, so there's another forty thousand. So when people talk about where the money goes, it's not hard to show where the money goes, but we just come up tonight to show you and tell you that we have ordered a new truck for the community in an outlying area, so, and we just wanna thank you all for supporting us enough to help with the fire tax and help keep little fire departments going, and we just wanna say thank you very much. Thank y'all, love you.
Okay, thank you, uh, look forward to seeing it one day.
In a parade.
Public comments are still open, if anybody else wants to say anything. Hear none, see none, I will go ahead and close the public comments at this time. Y'all wanna leave, I know that you've worked all day, you're tired, you may not wanna listen to this, feel free.
Thank y'all.
Thanks for all you do.
And you're not gonna stay.
I have too much business.
We have presentation to the board, and that is Eric Hamilton, thank you, Eric, come on up.
Good evening, just got you a quick update on Veterans Park. Spoke with contractors, project managers, mid-month, somewhere around middle of the month here, we're gonna be taking materials in, some rock, different things like that. We're gonna stage all that over on the, between the creek and the walkway, try and keep it out of the way, 'cause I know Randy Murphy has soccer until September thirtieth, and then we should start construction around the first of October, so.
How long do you anticipate?
Weather-dependent, I'm gonna say around twelve to sixteen weeks, so, and I know Veterans Day's coming up, I've spoke to the contractor, he said he would make sure that that Saturday, while y'all were doing a ceremony or anything down there, that they will be out, won't be making a lot of noise or anything like that.
Oh, that date.
Yeah, like I said, I think it's the eleventh, actually falls on Saturday, so, but we should be out of there, the holidays, it may be up sometime in January, but we're gonna have some soil disposal as far as dirt, we've, I've talked with Michael, we've got that taken care of, some trees, everything's gonna be gotten rid of and either donated or used on-site or somewhere for the county.
Any questions?
Um, yeah.
Go ahead.
Not about that, I was just curious about, didn't we go through a process of they were gonna get a truck, so that's in the works, I guess?
I am still pricing some, I've got several prices, I met with Michael two weeks ago, we met, talked about some prices, I'm still getting some, I'm waiting on some emails to come back, they've went out the roof, so, just pricing, seeing what we can get. And then, uh, also, I know Chelsea, was it last mid-month, she came before you all about travel, she would like me to inform you, she has been asked to be the chairman of the North Carolina DEA Scholarship Committee, so she's taking that position going forward.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, just to, so Eric, you remember, the, uh, board decided to take Chelsea's request up at their mid-month meeting.
She just, she got that invite, middle of the week last week, and she asked me if I'd just update the board that she'd been asked to do that, so.
Anything else, Eric, thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Thanks.
We'll move on to, uh, section B, general business for information, BDC security update, Michelle Luftman.
Yes, I just wanted to come to the board tonight with some information regarding the BDC, um, as we talked about in the work session, Michael Carter has been meeting with Kate Irwin and myself to do a transition between the county and the BDC board of the county, taking, uh, over the building and the, the day-to-day operations of that, so I just wanted to do an update, um, we had talked about using some of the funds in the BDC bank account to pay for much-needed security upgrades at the building, which includes the Wilkes Community College part, the BDC part, and the library part. And we, um, we got a quote in, and we have some plans that have been drawn up, and, um, to be able to do this security update, which would include cameras, it would include a PA system, um, a telephonic system that would alert all students, all people who work at the BDC, library staff, if there had to be like a, um, active shooter or something where they had to lock down the building, something like that, uh, locks on doors, um, actually doing a, um, an entrance way there with some, um, special bulletproof glass and different things to, to be buzzed in and out of the college, um, anyway, just a way so that they could lock it down if they needed to. Um, we, we got some quotes for that, and it appears that just the front entrance way was fifteen thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars for the glass part of the, of the building. The rest of it was, it was going to be somewhere around fifty-seven thousand dollars, so we're looking at fifty-seven thousand plus sixteen thousand for the, for the entire security update. And, you know, we as a board, of course, you know, we, we can't make a decision on this because it's a county-owned building, so we want, we wanted to try to get the blessing or the input from this board, if that's something that you want us to move forward with, you know, our time there is running up soon, the end of the month is our, is when we're officially doing the handover, but we as a board feel like it's very important to do this update with these funds, um, because, you know, Wilkes Community College is a very important part of our community, you know, we have a lot of tenants in the BDC, and then we have the, the library and all the children that come and go from the library, so we just felt like that, you know, it was very necessary, so we have not, as a board, taken official vote on this because we wanted the input of this board, if that's something that you support and all, because obviously it's your building, you own the building, so, um, you know, we're not gonna be having any further management responsibility or, or oversight coming up, so it would really be up to the county to implement these, these changes if, if that's what the board is feeling, you know, that they want to support, so if not, then, you know, we'll, we'll just, we'll, we'll let the money sit in, in the pot and draw more interest. Um, one thing that we have talked about doing with the money that we have in the funds is to, we would like to retain some of the funds to, because we're keeping our 501(c)(3) in, um, in place, we're gonna meet probably once a year to meet our, um, what they, they require for us to do as a 501(c)(3), but we wanna have some money in that pot in case there is some kind of economic development opportunity that comes to the county, and we would have those funds to be able to support that. We've also talked about helping with the, um, wayfinding road sign project, we've talked about that, we've also talked about, um, you know, putting this money to work and making it available for productive groups in the county to support their efforts towards economic development, so, again, just recap, keep, keep some of it for future, you know, needs as far as economic development goes, support groups in the county that are trying to bring economic development in, whether that be small business, you know, whatever, big business, support the wayfinding, uh, sign project, which we feel is very important to lead people to different places in the county, and to do the security update, so that's kind of our thinking as a board, and we were going to meet after this board met, when we could get, you know, an idea of what this board, I'm not asking for a vote, I'm just saying, you know, what are your thoughts as a board, because I wanna, I wanna hear that so I can take that back to my BDC board.
Chair, I think we've. Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. John?
Chair, I think we ought to query the members of the board in regards to the security changes, I would support that.
Any got any questions?
Yeah. First thing I'd like to do, somehow I'm getting arthritis in my neck, to watch, I wish we had a angle, but anyway, um, I agree, I think this is a perfect way, I mean, I like what I've heard from Michelle, and this is a part about inquiring, getting more information, but I like, this is an opportunity for them to invest some money in the building that we own, and, uh, I support it, it sounds like it's a good plan, and, uh, I, I don't have any reason not to support that.
Anything else? I've, I've got a couple comments that, uh, about the, you know, I think mainly about the security, the, uh, I don't know how much is geared towards Wilkes Community, but Wilkes Community gets from the state a hundred and four thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars a year for security for Wilkes Community College. It's up to the college how they wanna spend that money. Now, that's a big pot of money, I don't know if they're, I don't know if, if you've been engaged with Wilkes to ask them if they're interested in putting any money into it or not.
I have spoken with Wanda from Wilkes, and it's important to note that that number there is a big number, but it, it covers their, their main campus in Wilkes, the Ash and the Allegheny campus, so they do give Allegheny some amount of money, and they have done some work on their doors, their locks and key codes and things like that, but they can't do anything about the front entrance because, you know, the building is owned by the county, so.
It's built.
But they have given their portion already towards security, and Wanda said that they have used that amount to beef up the, uh, the door, the door locks.
Did she say how much they given?
I would be afraid to say because I'm not sure.
Well, I have a meeting tomorrow with the, uh, with the interim president, Morgan Francis, and I'm, I'm gonna go through some of these numbers. I, uh, I just don't want the county to spend money that Wilkes Community College could be spending, they've got, they've got money, uh.
I understand.
And this is just one pot that they have to draw from. That, that's one thing that, that concerned me, the other thing is, this bid is over the limit where we have to have multiple bids, does that affect the college, I mean, the county? I thought when it went over thirty or fifty.
It's, it's not a county organization.
No, but I'm, she's wanting our blessing from this board, is there another company out there that might be, have a different price?
Understand what you're saying, but, uh, but it is not, the procurement of this system is not being done by the county, it is being done by the BDC board, which would have to follow their own if they have, but I don't mean this wrong, we, we certainly should be involved or concerned or questioning it, but it's not our responsibility as it's been presented, and I'll defer to our attorney if there's anything different than that.
Well, I think we went through this in the work session, that money, the county has no control over that money, but Michelle just finished saying her board would like some guidance from this board, isn't that what you said?
Yeah, because we don't feel like we can undertake a building project on a building that is owned by the county unless the county blesses that.
Yes. I would cer- I would certainly think our maintenance people should be involved in something this expensive.
They are, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that, David has been a part of this, David Spicer from the beginning, and he's fully in support of this plan, and thought that it, it came out cheaper than what he actually anticipated, but he's fully in support of this.
Again, like I said, I meet with Morgan Francis tomorrow, and I'm, I'm gonna go through some of these concerns and questions, I just wanna be sure everybody agrees that this is the, the best system to put in at this time. It, it comes back to what we'd said in the, the work session, this money was earned from a county-owned building, but we have no say, except for what Michelle just said, as a blessing to how the money is spent, it, it wasn't taxpayers' money that the county commissioners have control over, we have basically no control on how they spend that money or how much they keep in a savings account. Go ahead.
Don't disagree, but I, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Luftman, please correct me, I, I don't think she or, or the BDC board is looking for the approval of the system, I believe they're looking for the approval of the Board of Commissioners allowing for a system to be installed within that facility. She's looking for the blessing of this body to say, yes, BDC board, we support the concept, you go out and do whatever you've gotta do to secure it, but we support the concept, and tell me if I'm incorrect.
That is correct, that is correct.
The concept is fine with me, but I would like to get additional information from Wilkes Community as to what their involvement, what they, what they foresee as what they consider the proper security, and I think the, the, uh, acting president, he's, uh, interested in this project.
I would, I would say if Commissioner Luftman has a copy of the proposal, you could take that with you.
I do.
And he could review it and see if they match what his criteria is.
My involvement with him, I'm still on the State Board of Community Colleges, this isn't something that's coming directly as a commissioner, I, I still serve on that State Board, so I look to get as much as we can for the county from the state. Anything else, Michelle?
I just wanted, I just wanna mention in this meeting, we said it in the last meeting, but, you know, twenty-some years ago, this board was set up with these regulations, so it's not us as the current BDC board trying to hold on to this money, this is the way it was set up from the, from the very beginning, this was how it was written, so we are just following the pathway that was laid before us, before any of us came to office or were on these boards, so.
I, I understand that completely.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure the general public understands that too, because this is kinda, this board, if I'm not mistaken, is kind of a one-off, um, there's not many boards that operate that way, right?
Nope, Allegheny County Economic Development Committee was set up the same way, and the, it's the other one that I'm aware of, but.
Council.
But it, this was long ago, it's, no one that is sitting here today, and a few that aren't even alive, were involved with that one.
I, I think it's a learning lesson for us in the, for commissioners in the future, how contracts are written with different groups, you know, who has, who has control.
Because, you know, when this project came about, there was so many things that were, that were different than they are now, Allegheny was focused on getting the Bristol compressors in here, and the Magnolia manufacturing, and the big factories, and that's just not here today, it's just a different landscape, so, you know, that's part of the reason why this BDC board is kinda going dormant, because, you know, we're, we're focused on now small business and, you know, uh, bringing smaller groups to the county, because we're just not gonna get those big factories.
There's a lot of people have the spaces rented, they were about full the last meeting.
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Carter, Timmy, John? If not, we'll move on to item number two, CTP plant, Michael.
Yeah, I've had a few meetings with DOT and some, and involved in those meetings have been some representatives from the High Country Council of Government, and, uh, they brought to my attention that Allegheny County had not updated its comprehensive transportation plan since two thousand and twelve, and unfortunately, this is a plan that was supposed to be updated every five years, so, um, we're just a tad behind on that, so they have provided me with a, a great listing of how we get this going, and we've gotta kick off some things and establish committees and do all this great stuff, and tonight I just wanted to inform you that we will be beginning that, in addition to updating this plan, we also have to update our current land use plan, which I have talked with Travis Dalton about, and he is going to work with the planning commission to, uh, get that taken care of, but probably over the next thirty days, this, this letter that I received is kinda like, seems like I get letters, and, uh, they're, they're great, but this is a letter that basically identifies that we have to do it, and here's how we do it, and, um... it and, um, you have to do it in a certain fashion so that it is done properly. They have identified to me that if done properly, this plan will take probably a year to turn around. It is not something that we can just bat our eyes or blink our tongues and get it taken care of. So there are many different categories that they identify as individuals with special interest that could be included on these steering committees. They have given me an official steering committee handbook that I would be glad to share with anyone, but it's just something that we've got to start. And I, I think, Timmy, I think you and John both serve on the RTO.
I took Timmy's place. And I will tell you that there are two projects that are on the planning list on the RTO right now. The roundabout for the bypass in eighteen and the roundabout for the, uh, Grandview and the bypass. And there's no date on it. So, uh, one of the problems that we're going to have, no matter what we've got, North Wilkesboro is sucking up everything at the racetrack. I mean, that money is flowing in. They've canceled everything, trying to get it to where they can get people in and out of the racetrack. So we've got to get it done, and if we don't put something up there, we're, we're not going to get anything.
To clarify the reason those two projects were put there, it was my understanding that those were projects submitted sometime back.
Yes.
And they did not make the cut. So they, it's not a score. It's not like you get points every time you submit, but those, those two projects are still legitimate projects that DOT believes, uh, could score well. And there's different mechanisms that go into that scoring component and we're working through some of that, but, uh, more or less, uh, just a, a update on where it is and how it started and a year from now, hopefully, we'll have this thing completed and submitted and we'll be good for another five. But that's where we're at right now.
Any questions or comments?
No.
If not, we'll move on to, uh, item number three under section B, Assistant County Manager Discussion, John Irwin and April Ham.
Right now, we've got, thank you, Mr. Chair. Right now, it is the time to start looking into forming a position for Assistant County Manager with a separate position for a, uh, administrative assistant to the county commissioners and the county manager, in my opinion. Now, we've combined everything before. Right now, the county manager is picking up the mail. He's distributing the mail. He's doing everything. He has no administrative assistant. He can't get out of that daggone room, plus all of the other things that he's got. We've identified that we've got areas that we are going to need supervision in, one of which is if we have a true Assistant County Manager, if we form that position as a standalone position, that Assistant County Manager can assume, uh, economic development duties. Not only that, if we have a Assistant County Manager, uh, possibly put overall supervision of the BDC, because we're going to have to have something there. Someone's going to have to look over that. April's, April is going to assume that, uh, and she will still have part of that, but somebody's got to be in there as an overall. The immediate need that I see right now is administrative assistance to the county manager and to the, uh, to the, uh, cha- uh, Board of Commissioners. He's doing our agenda. He's doing our minutes unless he can get, find someone else that he can, uh, grab a hold of and get them to do that. This is an immediate need, in my opinion, and, uh, it's a golden opportunity to have a standalone position for Assistant County Manager.
April?
Um, my part in this is just a reminder that the board did table the, um, job description. We were talking about just taking HR duties out of that. Um, I do agree with John about the administrative person. Um, I think the county manager's office needs an administrative person to take care of. Forya request is a, is a good example of that. And be backup administrative to other offices, um, plus be clerk to the board. Uh, that's kind of the way it was structured in the past. I do agree with that part of John's and just a reminder, we're tabled job description.
Mr. Carter, when, when do you foresee advertising or what, what are your plans going forward to give you some relief? I know that you and I have talked about different scenarios and, but sort of lay out a roadmap.
But the first thing I want to clarify, and I, I certainly appreciate Commissioner John for your comments, but it's, it's no secret that I've relied on the finance office to help out with a lot of these things. And, you know, April's sitting here right now and to clarify, you know, I may pass out some mail. I don't go to the post office, but they take care of that. I, I don't create your agendas and do your minutes. That's handled by the finance office. I have input on what goes on the agendas, but I'm not physically doing that. Now, that's not to say I won't. That's not to say I can't. It's just to say that I give credit where credit's due right now. They have assisted me greatly in that process. Now, as far as a roadmap, I, I concur. I think that there needs to be an administrative support position that fulfills not only the, the duties and tasks that would come from the county manager's office, but additionally have as an included duty clerk of the board. Now, I still stand behind having deputy clerks, and the reason being is I have found that to be invaluable over the time that I've served in government. So I can see that scenario. April and I did have conversation about that, and we've looked at grades and pay scales and all of that. So I think we have a general idea of where that would fall. Uh, as far as that position goes, I'd like to put that out just as quick as we could. And I, that's probably selfish, but I'd probably like to do that. The.
I realize I was putting that on your shoulders, but I also realize that you had the right to delegate.
And that's, we're on the same land. So to, to speak now about the Assistant County Manager role, I, honestly, I'd like to have a little more time to kind of think that through. You know, there, there are, there are different scenarios with that, and I understand completely that times are changing and, and tasks are becoming more and more and, and you can't put but so much on certain individuals before they break. I, I get that. That's one side of it. The other side of me is we've got a really good crew here with the county, and there's a part of me that would like to look internally to see what interest lies there because, you know, I, I'm a believer in providing people opportunities. I don't like for someone to feel like that, you know, this is as high or far as I can go because, you know, what does that create? I like having opportunity to increase one's, you know, asset to the county by taking on additional roles. Now, sure, there may have to be some delegation or some difference in structures to accommodate that, but right now, I'm trying to weigh that out. And I, I'd like at least to have until the next meeting that I can bring back a better idea on the Assistant County Manager position itself.
Sheriff, if I may.
Yes.
You've got to realize that my experience as military, I don't know how many times, and I frankly do not want to go back and think about the times, that the morning after that position was vacant, commanding officers, pilots flew into mountains, they flew into the ground. And whenever that happened immediately, if it was the CO, the XO took over. That was a designated responsibility. So there was not any break. Now, I know we all had a heart attack whenever you had your accident because we're looking around, what now? Fortunately, with government, it's a 24/7 job. When one goes down, another must take, immediately take over. And whether it's internal, a designation internal, I don't care as long as, one, they are qualified, two, they are capable. But we've got to have a chain of command. There cannot be ambiguity, ambiguity in government. Somebody goes down in 911, we don't stop. We can't stop. It, there's got to be a continuum there. And I would hope that if we designate a county manager, someone that is, one, qualified, two, capable, that we can fulfill that and hopefully, dear Lord, do not have us exercise it. But I look at that picture on the wall. It's happened once before. None of us are guaranteed tomorrow. That's my, that is my big hangup, if it be it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Michael, any other? I, I will say this, that I, uh, I volunteered to help Michael and, uh, he graciously turned me down. He said it'd take a year to train me. He didn't have that much time. He was afraid every time I went to lunch, I'd have to start all over.
Okay. I think it'd be best to move on now.
Go ahead.
Um, I know that we've got the money budgeted for the assistant, um, but the other one would be, do we have money in the budget?
It would have to be either a, an amendment or something that goes exactly against what Commissioner John just mentioned. It would have to be a, a later taking on, which would be recognizing some, some savings throughout the budget, and typically you don't see those until the third quarter or better, so.
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Michael, anything else? Okay, with, not, we'll move on to section C. Uh, this general business, this section C is for action, uh, one, two. Uh, April Ham, I think you're up two different times.
I am. Um, the first one is a line item transfer. This is actually for the jail. This is for insurance and medical cost, um, some late bills that have come in, actually in the amount of $25,820 and 20.
Remove, approve, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second in any discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Most, all those opposed likewise. Motion carries four oh.
Um, the second one is one for DSS, um, kind of the same situation. We've had some late bills come in with attorney fees and things with DSS. Uh, it, the total amount is $12,520.
Any questions?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
A motion and a second. Give her just a second.
I'm writing these down.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed likewise. Motion carries four zero.
And the last one is actually a budget amendment. This is some reimbursement for, from the earthquake funds. Uh, it's, it's a little bit of everything. Uh, it's reimbursement of salaries, um, for time, and, um, I believe transfer facility costs also.
Any comments, Mr. Carter?
I just want in, in jest, I've never seen an earthquake fung budget, so.
Motion to approve, uh, earthquake fun bu- fung budget. Just let's apply that as much as we can. We won't catch too many like that.
No, I had auditors here last week too, so.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed likewise. Motion carries four zero. That's it, Ms. April?
That's it.
Then we move on to section D, County Managers' Comments.
Chairman, for one of the few times in the year, I actually do not have any additional comments tonight.
Commissioner John Irwin?
I will follow the lead of my county manager and make no comment.
I, I got a couple of comments. Sorry, I have to break, break the chain here, but, um, I just wanted to mention that we had a, um, we had our, our first, um, fire commission meeting this past week. It was my first, as I met with all the fire chiefs, their assistant chiefs, the rescue squad, Daniel Roten, uh, the ambulance service. So it was a, it was a very nice meeting and we are very fortunate to have all these people who care so much about other people that they are willing to go out and put their time aside to go, to go help those in need. So I just want to say that. A big topic of conversation was communications. So Daniel had spoken about how we put a new, uh, transponder up on a different mountain and it's doing better, and we're talking about doing another one out in the Glade Creek area. So hopefully, we're making communications better for everybody. So I, I do want to have a meeting with you and, and Dan, so I can update the chiefs on it. And the last thing I wanted to mention is we're having a bull riding coming up at the fairgrounds on the 22nd and the 23rd. Folks, this is a big deal. We're having some people in this that are actual PBR bull riders. They have their card with PBR, and you just don't know how fortunate we are to have such an event coming here to this county. And it's going to be a big deal, so come out and, and watch the bull riding.
You going to ride?
Maybe, if you come.
You're riding, I'm coming.
I'm putting you on air.
Timmy?
No, I'm good. I think it's, uh, all well.
I'll keep mine short and sweet. The, uh, Michelle just mentioned the September 22nd at the fairgrounds. The fairgrounds has been used a lot this summer. I mean, a lot of people have come through there, and I'm glad that more and more people are using that facility. Um, I think you're working on a date for some of the board members to go to Avery County to look at a pool as soon as you get that nailed down. The, Heather and I just had a brief discussion a few minutes ago about the, uh, the agreement that the county made with, uh, North Carolina Parks and Recreation. And apparently, there was a letter sent to Randy Murphy from Randy. You, you go ahead and explain that and my concern about the force majeure with the earthquake.
So because we obtained this grant and used it for the property where the pool is located, there were certain restrictions on the county in being able to convert that use to something other than for a pool. Um, so the first thing that we had to do was send a letter, um, which I wrote and then Randy sent out to the required, uh, district or our area, uh, not governor, but our area representative for NC Parks. Um, and of course, they responded and, and said no, that our, our plan, which was to help the school, was not approved and we could not do that. I mentioned in that letter two different times that the reason we were asking for this change in use was because of the earthquake. change in use was because of the earthquake, which, of course, is part of that grant. It says, if there is a force majeure, that potentially, we wouldn't have to comply with the requirements of the grant. And I assume that because I had mentioned it twice in the letter, that they would realize that that was the reason we couldn't use that property again for a pool. However, we're not really sure if they did recognize that part of the letter that was sent to them. So the thought is, maybe we follow up with them one more time with that representative to say, did you see, or did you understand that this was because of, you know, this force majeure, which is part of our contract, that we are not going to be able to operate as a pool, you know, and then maybe see if there's a way for us to get them to recognize that. And that may allow us to not have to do a change in use, which was what they recommended. I just figured that they denied that when they sent that letter back to him, and we didn't think to follow up necessarily about that, because they just denied it flat out and said, we wouldn't approve that plan. Maybe we didn't ask it the way that they require, which would be, we say that we'd like a waiver because of the force majeure. Maybe we send another letter with that language and not asking for a change of use, just asking for it to be waived.
The original letter to the Parks and Recreation didn't start with you.
Yeah, I was the one who wrote it, and Randy was the one that sent it. And then he was the one that received the response, because it's coming from Parks and Recreation to our area representative for the grant.
Did you get a copy of that? Do you remember? I just think it's worth double checking.
Absolutely.
Because Timmy and I had a meeting today with Superintendent Weaver, and we were talking about the swimming pool and what their hopes or plans was to be incorporated in this new building project that they're doing. But the way that I read the contract, it's not up until 2032, something right in that time period.
We have several years left, and the only way to avoid compliance would be the waiver or a change in use. And we started that process, but they denied us. So maybe revisiting with specifically mentioning force majeure and getting them to recognize that as part of that grant might, we might be able to use that. Now, we don't have any guarantees. They could deny us again, and, you know, we may be back to square one, which is, they're not, they won't agree to what our plans were. Lots of requirements in regards to that.
Is it agreeable for the Board, for Heather and for Michael, to start a new process and take, never take no for an answer?
Worth a try. Worth a try.
That's all that I've got, if anybody, anything to add? April? Heather, would you like to say some words?
I just did. No, I'm good. Thank you.
With Heather's last few words, I will call this meeting adjourned.